I'll be adjourned to town meeting to order. As we start, I want to first speak about safety in the room and note that the major fire exits are two on each side of the room, which we recommend that you use as the quickest way to empty the room should we have an emergency situation. On page ninety-two in your town report are notes about the Burlton Town Meeting and some of our traditions in regard to rules. And on page ninety-one, the page before, are the town bylaws which actually govern the conduct of town meetings. In addition to that, we use the Massachusetts Moderator's Manual Town Meeting Time as a reference in regard to the procedure of town meeting. Those other two pages I just mentioned indicate some of our old custom that we're going to perhaps depart from manually. And at this time, I will call on the town clerk to read the call for the meeting and the constable's return.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester S.S., to either of the constables of the town of Burl in the county of Worcester. Greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Burl Memorial School in said Burl on Monday, the fifth day of May 2014, next at seven-thirty o'clock in the evening, then and there to act on the following articles in relation there to. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof as per vote of the town in said town seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereof to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting as was foreseen, given under our hands this fourteenth day of April in the year of our Lord 2014. Order Selectman Judy Booman, Chairman Thomas Inger, Vice Chairman Walter Biffett, Clerk. A true copy attests, Howard H. Spaulding, Constable, Worcester S.S. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warn the inhabitants of the town of Burl by posting up attested copies thereof at the town hall, town offices, and the post office fourteen days before the time of holding said meeting as within directed. Howard H. Spaulding, Constable, April sixteenth, two thousand fourteen.
Couple of announces from the town clerk's office. Dog licenses will be available in the election next week. That's a quick way to get it done before you start running into fines the first of Also, please return your census forms to the town clerk. Each January, the town clerk has to send out a census form and ask everybody to fill it out and return it. This is the way we keep the record of voters and eligible people eligible to vote up to date. Somebody that wants to come in and register to vote, that's how we know that they actually live at the address. So these are very useful to the town clerk in maintaining the records properly with the Commonwealth in regard to our voters. And also absentee ballots, applications for the town election next week at the entrance desk down here at the door. And if you or someone in your household might need one, pick one up and take it along. Okay. We now go to the warrant for the meeting, which starts on page ninety-three of your town report. And we follow the articles in order as they go. Article one is about filling vacancies and choosing time offices. So a motion under article one. Selectman Judy Booman.
I move to approve the motions as printed under articles one through seven of the warrant for this meeting.
Motion made to second it to approve the motions as printed under articles one through seven of the warrant for this meeting. If you look at the, your warrant, and in the book, you will see that there are in italics under each article is a motion that relates to that article and is the action that is proposed under this motion, under those seven articles. And if we can act on all of them together, we've saved a few minutes. So is there, this is also the time since it includes the second article about the printed reports, if there's anyone that has a comment on a printed report or a correction to a printed report, this would be the time to bring that up also. Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is to approve all of the motions under articles one through seven. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article eight, to hear and act on the reports of any outstanding committees or take any action relative thereto. Are there outstanding reports to be given? We did receive a report from the Emergency Management Department, which just didn't quite make it when we went to press with the town report. The Emergency Management Department has been working with MEMA, Massachusetts Emergency Management Agencies, on EMPG equipment grants. We were able to successfully secure the two thousand eleven EMPG grant and purchase three portable radios to assist in the event of an emergency. We were also able to secure funds in the two thousand twelve EMPG grant and purchased four GPS tracking devices to assist in search and rescue operations. These are state-of-the-art units and able to work in conjunction with GPS devices purchased by other town departments. We are currently attempting to secure the two thousand thirteen EMPG grant to purchase a laptop computer to assist in our operations. Dennis A. Bartlett, Emergency Management Director, Kevin M. Colome, Deputy Emergency Management Director. Are there any other reports to be given at this time? Hearing no one, we will pass on to... That report is, will also be published on the town website for people that aren't here or people that wish to examine it further. Article nine, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or borrow or transfer from available funds or otherwise provide all necessary sums of money to defray the town's expenses for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand fourteen, and to determine the salaries of town offices for that period or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee will recommend. If you go to page eighty-seven in your book, it will be in the Finance Committee's proposed budget. Actually, it starts on eighty-six with the summary. And most of the motions and discussion will center on these pages and the following pages in the book. Our Finance Committee want to introduce the budget business. Bill Tomasino of the Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of eight hundred sixty-one thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars to cover items one through fifty in the Finance Committee's FY two thousand fifteen budget.
Motion is made to raise and appropriate, that means to tax us all, for the sum of eight hundred sixty-one dollars and eight hundred ninety, excuse me, eight hundred sixty-one thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars to cover items one through fifty in the Finance Committee's fiscal two thousand fifteen budget. Do you want to speak to that further?
The primary increases in this part of the budget were due to some salary increases due to the extra hours people will be working to handle the new developments in the town. Other than that, most of the budget was fairly flat.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Mr. Sardell. And as stated in the book there, if you get up to speak, I'd appreciate it if you would identify yourself and perhaps where you live, just to give people an idea who you are.
Richard Sardell on Baker Road. Yes, could we get a little more explanation of line number four, wages part-time on the selectmen? It has a significant increase. And just like to know what that represents, what that money's going to be used for. Thank you.
Someone want to address that question? Scott Hawkins of the Finance Committee.
That position is for a new sixteen-hour-week admin position that the selectman will oversee, again, to help out with some of the extra work that's going to be around for the new developments. And if I could say for this section and other sections as well, the budget that we're recommending, all the increases we're seeing are covered by the new growth, and that was the increased taxes and revenue that we will be receiving from the Highland Commons and River Bridge Developments.
Anyone? Mr. Sardell?
Richard Sardell again, perhaps from the desk. I don't understand what you mean by increased operations under that particular line. Could you elaborate on that a little more, please?
Selectman Tom Andrew.
Yes, this is intended to fund administrative help to support primarily the inspectors. Currently, this is done off the corner of the Selectment's secretary's desk and, again, given the, given the high volume of work that is being done at this point, attendant development, and the need to coordinate with the multiple inspectors and to have somebody there during hours to speak to people who are seeking permits or have questions or submitting permits, we have suggested that we should create this separate position to support the inspectional services.
Are there other comments in regard to the motion which covers the entire page eighty-seven in your book? Hearing none, I'm going to ask you to vote. Motion is to raise and appropriate the sum of eight hundred sixty-one thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars to cover items one through fifty in the Finance Committee's fiscal year two thousand fifteen budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Moving on to the Public Safety section of the budget, page eighty-eight. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of one million three hundred and thirty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars to cover items fifty-one to seventy-six in the Finance Committee's fiscal year two thousand fifteen budget. And to appropriate from the inspectors' offset receipts account the sum of a hundred and eight thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars to the following line items. Item sixty-five, plumbing and gas inspectors' wages part-time, thirty-one thousand. Item sixty-six, plumbing and gas inspector expenses, six hundred and thirty dollars. Item sixty-seven, inspector of wires' wages part-time, fifty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Item sixty-eight, inspector of wire expenses, five hundred and seventeen dollars. And item sixty-nine, fire inspector wages part-time, twenty-four thousand five hundred. And to appropriate from the rescue squad receipts reserve for the appropriation for the sum of eighty thousand dollars to the following line items. Line item sixty, rescue squad wages part-time, thirty thousand. Item sixty-one, rescue squad incentive, eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. And line item sixty-two, rescue squad expenses, forty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars in the Finance Committee's fiscal year two thousand fifteen budget.
The motion is to raise and appropriate the sum of one million three hundred thirty-eight thousand one hundred seventy-one dollars to cover items fifty-one through seventy-six in Finance Committee's two thousand fifteen budget. And then some additional items from, amounts of money from other sources, from the inspectors' offset receipts account, the sum of a hundred eight thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars, and from the, um, rescue squad receipts reserve for appropriation, eighty thousand dollars. And all of those amounts of money add up to the total of one million five hundred twenty-seven thousand sixty-eight dollars that you see printed in the book, right? Okay. Scott?
I just want to find out that although there's some increases through some, uh, job reclassifications, the most significant change in this section of the budget is under wages full-time under the police where we have agreed to a recommendation of adding another police officer to the fire department, to the police department.
Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries the affirmative. Stan Rogalinski from the Finance Committee.
Moving on to everybody's favorite topic, the education portion of the budget. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of two million six hundred and fifty-two thousand and six dollars to cover items seventy-seven and seventy-eight in the Finance Committee's FY two thousand fifteen budget.
Motion is made to second it for the sum of two million six hundred and fifty-two thousand and six dollars to cover items seventy-seven through seventy-eight in the Finance Committee's budget. That would be the Burlon School Department. Mr. Rogalinski, do you want to speak to it?
I guess I would just refer folks to the, to the school committee's report on page eight-four, or the Finance Committee's report on page eight-four is our, our statement on this and on the school that has all the stuff in there as well.
Someone else wants to speak on this?
Hi, I'm Buzz Harris, I live on, excuse me, Village Lane. I read the portion of the letter from the Finance Committee about school funding, and I know a couple of people in the Finance Committee and know that they're very familiar with budgets and spreadsheets and how budgets are presented, et cetera. And it concerns me that they're expressing their disappointment and reading between the lines displeasure with the way that the school department has been reporting its budgets and not giving them adequate information to be able to evaluate whether they should support an increase or not, or why an increase is needed. I've got plenty of experience with budgets in my life, and I know that if you want to, it's very easy, in fact, to present a simple, straightforward budget, even a long spreadsheet, that somebody with business experience can understand. So I'm a little confused that the school department doesn't seem to be able to do that, and I'd like to hear more about that.
Someone from the school department want to respond to that? Brooke Blain, the school committee?
With Blain, the school committee. We've had a lot of changes at the high school, or in the admin office.
Want to speak directly to me, Michael?
We've had a lot of administrative changes in the admin office that we are trying to address. But the more difficult is trying to come up with budget numbers in December when the state hasn't even come out with its numbers. So there's a fair amount of adjustments that come along with it. I believe that the school committee and the superintendent is working very hard to work with the FINCOM to have a better understanding of what they're looking for and when they're looking for it. So we have taken your suggestion, I'll say, and we have taken it to heart, and I'm confident that you'll see an improvement in our communication and information that we bring to the Finance Committee. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak? If not, the motion is to raise and appropriate the sum of two million six hundred fifty-two thousand six dollars to cover items seventy-seven through seventy-eight in the Finance Committee's fiscal year two thousand fifteen budget. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries the affirmative. Mr. Tomasino of the Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, for public works and facilities, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and ten dollars to cover items seventy-nine through ninety in the Finance Committee's FY two thousand fifteen budget. And to appropriate from the transfer station sticker and recycling offset receipts account the sum of eighty-four thousand dollars to item eighty-eight, transfer station expenses. And to appropriate thirteen thousand six hundred dollars from general cemetery receipts and two thousand from sale of lots to item ninety cemetery expenses in the Finance Committee's FY two thousand fifteen budget.
Motion is made to second it to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and ten dollars to cover items seventy-nine through ninety in the Finance Committee's budget. Transfer from the, and to take from the, appropriate from the transfer station sticker and recycling offset receipts account, eighty-four thousand dollars. And to appropriate thirteen thousand six hundred dollars from general cemetery receipts and two thousand dollars from the sale of lots. And all of those amounts together add up to the number that you see at the bottom of the column there on, on page eighty-eight, to fund all of these items. You want to speak to it, sir?
The total increase for this section was a modest two point two nine percent. Now you notice on the highway department full-time wages, there's a twenty thousand dollar increase. This was to reward four employees who are doing work beyond their classification. But also, if you look at expenses, the highway superintendent was able to offset ninety-five percent of the wage increases by reducing the expenses.
Is there anything else to be said in this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Mr. Tomasino.
Mr. Moderator, for human services, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-nine thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars to cover items ninety-one through one hundred and three in the Finance Committee's FY two thousand fifteen budget.
Motion is to raise and appropriate thirty-nine thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars to cover line items ninety-one through one oh three. Anything to be said further on that motion? Anyone else have a question or a comment? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Rogalinski.
Mr. Moderator, for culture and recreation, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred twenty-six thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars to cover items one oh four through one eleven in the Finance Committee's FY two thousand fifteen budget.
Motion is made to second it for one hundred twenty-six thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars to be raised and appropriated for items one oh four through one eleven. Do you want to speak to that further? Does anyone else want to speak to that motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hawkins.
For debt and interest, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and to appropriate the sum of six, nine thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars from the septic loan receipts available for appropriation to cover items one twelve and one thirteen in the Finance Committee's fiscal year two thousand fifteen budget.
Motion is made to second it to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred forty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and to appropriate the sum of six, nine thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars from the septic loan receipts available for appropriation to cover items one twelve and one thirteen in the Finance Committee's fiscal year two thousand fifteen budget. Motion is made to second it to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred forty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and to appropriate the sum of nine thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars from septic, from septic loan receipts available for appropriation to cover items one twelve through one thirteen in the Finance Committee's budget. You want to speak to that, Scott? Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Chris Keefe from the Finance Committee.
As a bet, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred and ninety-four to cover items one fourteen and one fifteen in the Finance Committee's FY two thousand fifteen budget.
Four hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars to be raised and appropriated for items one fourteen through one fifteen. You want to speak to that, Chris? Get close to the mic.
A little over three.
Lynn Ryan of the...
I was just going to say what the increase in the budget was, so we will tell you.
Lynn Ryan of the As of the Bell, every location committee.
Lynn Ryan sent us to, our overall budget is up three point four one percent. Our assessment is up sixteen percent. That's due to an increase in four students over the last year and some changes for reimbursement or from the state money or whatever. Just to point, this also includes interest on our renovation project, and as of right now, our renovation project is on time and on budget. If any of you have a chance or haven't had a chance to meet our superintendent, Pat Collins is with us tonight. Pat, would you just stand up for a second so folks will know who you are? If anyone has any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Does anyone else want to speak on this motion? If not, the motion is for four hundred thirty-five, uh, to raise and appropriate four hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars for items one fourteen and one fifteen. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Motion carries by unanimous vote.
For Tohato, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,028,95 to cover items one-sixteen and one-seventeen in the finance committee's FY 2015 budget.
Motion is made and seconded to for the sum of $3,028,95 to cover line items one-sixteen through one-seventeen. Do you want to speak to that, Chris?
Basically, the assessment for Berlin for the Tohato budget is down, as the book says, 1.9 percent. And I believe that is basically due to using more school choice money this year.
Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,028,95 to cover items one-sixteen through one-seventeen in the finance committee fiscal 2015 budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries the affirmative. Mr. Hocken.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,087,600 to cover items one-eighteen to one-twenty-four in the finance committee's fiscal year 2015 budget.
The motion is to raise and appropriate $1,087,600 to cover items one-eighteen through one-twenty-four in the finance committee's fiscal 2015 budget. You want to speak to that, Scott?
The most significant change here is health insurance, which is not as a bigger rate as we could be seeing or have seen in the past. A significant chunk of this increase is covering the health insurance for a new police officer. So all of our rates have not gone up much.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. That completes the business under Article Nine. Article ten, to see if the town votes to transfer a sum of money from the Anahunt Fund to the library account and further to authorize the acceptance of any other monies from various sources to the library account or take action relative to it. Mr. Smith of the Library Board.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $50 from the Anahunt Fund to the library account and to appropriate from the library dog fund the sum of $1,656.50 to the library account and to further authorize the acceptance of any other monies from various sources to the library account and the library trustees.
Motion is made and seconded to transfer the sum of $50 from the Anahunt Fund to the library account and to appropriate from the library dog fund the sum of $1,656.50 to the library account and to further authorize the acceptance of any other monies from the various sources to the library account. You want to speak to it? Okay. The finance committee's comment?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Is there anything to be said on this motion? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. And Article eleven, to guide to cemetery perpetual care. Mr. Bob Gile of the Cemetery Commission.
I move to accept the sum of $6,000 for cemetery perpetual care.
Motion is made and seconded to accept the sum of $6,000 for cemetery profession, uh, perpetual care. Finance committee's comment?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Is there anything that anyone wants to say about this? Comments, questions? Hearing none, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article twelve, I move to, uh, excuse me, this is about Chapter Ninety transportation bond monies. Mr. Slaughter, Department of Public?
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate the apportionment of Chapter Ninety transportation bond issued monies in the amount of $193,470.
Motion is made and seconded to appropriate the apportionment of Chapter Ninety transportation bond issued monies in the amount of $193,470. You want to speak to it, Walter?
This is, this is monies that the state gives the town the cherry sheet for highway purposes and this article has to appropriate apportionment up to the highway department who will then use it to repair roads and they're now in fact engaged in a rather extensive rehab and rehabilitation of river roads. So we need the money.
Finance committee's comment?
The finance committee recommends approval.
Does anyone else want to speak to the motion? Hearing no one, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Mr. Andrew.
Mr. Sanders, Board of Selectmen. Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move to establish and authorize the use of a revolving fund account for fiscal year 2015 for permitting software pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E and a half, for the purposes, maximum expenditure and authority to expend as outlined in the table below. Expenditure shall not be made or liabilities incurred from any such revolving fund in excess of the balance of the fund or in excess of the total authorized expenditure. The authorized department shall report to the annual town meeting and the Board of Selectmen the total amount of receipts and expenditures for the prior fiscal year and the current fiscal year through December thirty-first. Interest earned on any revolving fund should be treated as general fund revenue of the town. And then the table which appears on page ninety-five of your report indicates that the title, the purpose is permitting software. The maximum amount expendable is $30,000. The source of receipts and use of funds are receipts, three percent atop building, plumbing, gas, and electrical permit fees. Use payment to GOTMS Inc. for support for training on and right to use its permitting software and the authority to expend is with the Board of Selectmen.
Motion is made and seconded to establish and authorize the use of revolving fund account for permitting software pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E and a half. And this is for permitting software to do with our inspection, inspection departments. And I would note that in that first group of articles that we voted, we had several revolving funds that had been established previously and for a number of years. And so they were taken up together, but this is a new one, so we're taking it up separately this time. Mr. Sanders, you want to speak to it?
No, again, very simply, this, this allows us to establish the permitting process on the computer rather than on tons of little sheets of paper. Uh, it is funded by a surcharge on the inspection fees and it is paid out of those receipts.
Finance committee's comment?
Finance committee recommends approval of this article.
Does anyone else want to speak to this motion?
Richard Sardell, Baker Road. Uh, last year at the town meeting, you approved, the, the town approved to purchase $11,750 for purchase of building officials permitting inspection services software. Uh, but for the purchase of the software, now when that was done, there was no mention that it would have to add additional administrative help in the selectmen's office to use the permitting software or that there would be a charge for that software to an ongoing basis. Now, the charge, uh, the number thirty thousand seems to be a pretty high number. It's the largest revolving account that we would have. Three percent atop of the building permit is paid by the person that gets the permit. So if you get a permit for wiring, that was fifty dollars, it'll be fifty dollars, fifty-one dollars and fifty cents, I guess. I guess that's how it works. So it's being funded by the person that's getting the permit. That's true. Now, a revolving account can't spend more money than to put in. So where the thirty thousand came from, I don't know because that would represent a million dollars worth of building permits, which is pretty good. Assuming that you've built both malls or pulled permits for both malls this coming year, then you might get to a million dollars worth of whatever. I think the thing that annoys me here and why I'm up here is that this wasn't presented as part of the article last year. We were told this was purchase of software, period. And now that we approve that money, we see that there are additional costs associated with it. That I would recommend voting this stat. That would also say that the money that was appropriated last year would return to the taxpayers in free cash because there would be no need to purchase the software if you're not going to use it. And as, as of the state, that money has not been spent. Now, if I'm off base with this, somebody wants to correct something I said, that's fine. But I would recommend a no vote on this. Thank you.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you for that, Richard. Um, just, I will say a couple of things and then I, if I may prevail upon Diane Peterson to assist me with some of the, uh, some of this. Uh, first of all, there is no particular connection with the software and the additional administrative help for the inspectors. The additional help for the inspectors, which we voted a few minutes ago, is, is really due to the fact that the workload was in excess of what could be processed, as I said, off the corner of the desk of the selectmen's administrative assistant. So there's really no, no, no connection there. Uh, I would emphasize here that the thirty thousand, you have to put in a maximum amount that you can spend out of that. And Richard very stupidly said that if everything comes home to roost at one time, it could go as high as that. So you want to set a figure that's sufficient, has sufficient capacity if everything comes in. However, if our receipts are less than thirty thousand, they're five thousand, they're seven thousand, whatever, that is the maximum amount that we can spend under this. So the thirty thousand figure was absolutely a sort of a worst-case highest number that we could imagine rationally coming through on this account. Dan, do you mind speaking about the relationship between last year and this year? Yes. Uh, if I might yield the floor to Diane Peterson, who has worked with the software developer on this and I think can speak to the other question.
Diane Peterson, the working assessor.
So last year, we did, you all voted in the $11,750 to pay for what was printed in the book, the software purchase for permitting software, which actually would be used by this coming year, um, the building plumbing and gas inspectors. Uh, it has a lot more capability than that, but the selectmen thought that was a good place to start. And it has a lot more functionality and the efficiencies that it brings to the communication between all the boards is something that is very, um, very well needed in the town so that when a permit comes in, um, all departments get to see and comment on permits. If there's outstanding issues in a department, you don't find out after the fact. So the relationship here between these two is that we needed, um, and I don't, Richard, I don't remember that it wasn't explained last year, um, there was no charge other than getting the town to support the, um, the money that we needed for essential mass regional planning to be part, to get the, the collaborative pricing on purchasing the software. The user fee will cover any additional, will cover all the, uh, the usage of the product. But what the $11,750 covers is, is software and training. And we actually had to have that last year's and anticipated of the prior year, which was actually fiscal year thirteen, at the time we put together the number for, um, central mass regional planning in order to get it on the warrant. Um, we didn't have all the commercial development. So when the accountant and, um, got together with trying to figure out a funding mechanism, a legal one, to pay the GOTMS for their continued use of the software in the future as there are no additional charges, that's how we support that. The town doesn't pay it. The users pay that fee. So in trying to figure out what that number would be, we wanted to give it the worst case. And worst case being a hundred million dollars worth of construction. Um, and that one percent is the building permit and it's three percent of the building permit fee, which ended up to be thirty thousand dollars for a maximum, we figured the same thing. If everything fell into next year, this year and next year, we would be covered. We wouldn't have to go back to the town. We wouldn't have a shortage. Um, so that's really where that came from. But it is user fee based in anything that we do with that permitting software.
Someone else want to speak to the motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is to establish a revolving fund account for the permitting software as it has been described in the, in the discussion prior to this time to be administered by the Board of Selectmen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries the affirmative. Motion carries the affirmative. Article fourteen, see if the town will vote to accept the provision of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section fifty-seven B, to issue property tax bills not in excess of fifty dollars as a single bill. Call in tax collector, Richard Sardell.
Richard Sardell, tax collector this time. Mr. Moderator, I move to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section fifty-seven B, to issue property tax bills not in excess of fifty dollars as a single bill effective as of May sixth, two thousand fourteen.
Motion is made and seconded to take this action. You want to speak to it, Richard?
Yeah, this is kind of a housekeeping thing, but it's important. It's been our practice, actually, to, if a, the bills go out twice a year for property tax, and November, and due November first, due May first, and we've been issuing a single bill if the bill was less than fifty dollars. There's probably around ninety, roughly ninety bills of that way. I periodically review the general laws to be sure we're in compliance, and when I reread this one, it says, "If any city or town which accepts a provision of this section notwithstanding," which meant that it had to be voted on, then check to see if it was already in the bylaws, and it was not, therefore, we've been in a technical violation. So it's necessary that the town vote on this, and will be legal in what we've been doing for the past many years. Thank you.
The Finance Committee has, has a printed recommendation of this. Do you want to speak to it, or? Finance Committee recommends this action. Does anyone else wish to speak on the motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article fifteen. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds to sum of thirty-six thousand dollars for the purpose of paving the transfer station service yard. Paul McKelk of the Board of Health.
Paul McKelk, Carter Street, Board of Health. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to adjust that. I move to transfer thirty-two thousand dollars in free cash for the purpose of paving the transfer station service yard and any related expenses, said some to be expended by the Board of Health. What this deals with is, our transfer station has been in existence for about thirty-one years. We, over time, we've looked at winter safety issues, ICE, we look at maintenance of the transfer station, the highway department probably spends in the course of the year between materials, time, labor, somewhere between three and four thousand dollars a year filling potholes. If, if we are paved, it will facilitate any vehicle, not just trucks, it'd be easier on cars. The highway department will be able to plow it more readily and sand it more appropriately in the winter for safety purposes. And when it comes to having hazardous waste days, the DEP requires that that be done on a paved surface. Now, we had one this past year, and we used what little paved surface we had, and everything was fine, but as time goes on, the DEP regulations just keep getting a little tighter, and their viewing of what goes on gets a little bit tighter, so that we feel that this is an appropriate action for the transfer station.
Do you want to comment on the amount?
The initial figure of thirty-six thousand dollars was a budget number. The type of winter we had, we weren't able to get a good estimate until this spring, and when we did, we found that our budget number of thirty-six was about four thousand dollars higher than what we need.
The motion is to transfer thirty-two thousand dollars in free cash for the purpose of paving the transfer station's service yard and any related expenses, said some to be expended by the Board of Health. The Finance Committee has a positive recommendation printed. Mr. Harkin, do you want to comment?
As we get into the sort of capital expenditure sort of part of the evening, I wanted to point out that at the start of this meeting, in free cash, we have a little over five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. And if every one article passes, and all of them come out of free cash, they would come to about five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. So officially, we would have enough money to do all of them if we so choose. This particular one, we have a recommendation to approve.
Does anyone else want to speak on this motion? Hearing no one, I will ask you to vote. Thirty-two thousand dollars for the purpose, as indicated in Article thirteen, Article fifteen. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries the affirmative. Article sixteen, to see if the town will raise appropriate borrow, transfer from available funds to sum of two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to replace the nineteen ninety-nine combination truck with a six-wheel combination dump and sander truck, or take any action. Keith Klummer, Superintendent of Streets and Other Stuff.
Other stuff. Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in free cash to replace the nineteen ninety-nine combination truck with a six-wheel combination dump and sander, said some to be expended by the selectmen.
Motion made and seconded for two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in free cash for this purpose. Keith?
This is part of the capital plan that's been going on for years. What you have to do is you have to keep replacing your equipment, or it ends up costing you a lot more while you put good, good money after that. This was actually up last year, because we needed a boiler down heater, roof fix, and quite a few other things, I delayed it to this year, but now we're going into sixteen, seventeen years. This particular truck is our real busy truck. It does the plow, and it does sanding, it hauls all the dirt, it hauls all the snow, puts up edge roads, materials. It's a little more money this time, because I ordered a stainless steel body, and also a wing for the plow rather than just a straight plow. My theory there is to try and get the roads plowed a little quicker. Right now, the main roads are plowed with the, the big truck and a little truck. So by putting a wing on this truck, I should be, I should be able to do one pass on the main roads, one way and the other way, which will give me the other truck to take another route and open the roads up much quicker. So it is a little bit more money than a regular straight, straight truck.
Finance Committee has a positive printed recommendation. Do you have a further comment? Does anyone else want to speak? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Article seventeen, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow, transfer from available funds to sum of seventy thousand dollars for purchase of hot dogs. You have it? Keith, do you have the hot dog motion?
Ah.
Put it away so we could leave, just in case in a hurry.
Yeah.
Hi, Keith again. I move to transfer seventy thousand dollars in free cash to purchase hot tub, said some to be expended by the selectmen.
Made and seconded, seventy thousand dollars in free cash for the purchase of hot tub. Keith?
This year, seventy thousand, I'm hoping to do some reconstruction of some fixing of South Street, along with some of the Chapter nine plan.
Finance Committee has a positive recommendation. Anything further to be said there? Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article eighteen, to see if the town, you know, all those things. Five thousand dollars for the purpose of replacing the fire alignment security system in the Berlin Public Library. Mark Smith and Library Trustees.
Mark Smith, fifty-two Plaza Street. Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer five thousand dollars in free cash for the purpose of replacing the fire alignment security system at the Berlin Public Library, said some to be expended by the Library Trustees.
Motion made and seconded for five thousand dollars in free cash for this purpose. You want to speak to it?
Yes, the fire and security system at the library is quite old, and it has been reviewed. There are a number of things wrong with it, and it's not fixable. It needs to be replaced. And so, when we looked into the process, our library director, Robert Hodge, is here with us, and he has had some estimates, they range anywhere from twenty-eight hundred dollars to up forty-four hundred dollars in total for a new system. Our building is the only one that is not on the system that the rest of the town buildings are on, and there are, as I said, things wrong with the existing system. For instance, the, the red warning light outside the front door doesn't work, and cannot be made to work in the current, it's such an old system that it can't be fixed. It's got to be replaced.
The Finance Committee has a positive recommendation printed. Is there anything further to be said here? Does anyone else have a comment in regard to Article eighteen? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate, all those things. The sum of five thousand dollars for the purpose of replacing the book drop box outside the Berlin Public Library. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer five thousand dollars in free cash for the purpose of replacing the book drop box outside of the Berlin Public Library, said some to be expended by the Library Trustees.
Motion is made and seconded for five thousand dollars in free cash for this purpose. Finance Committee has a positive recommendation printed. Anything further to be said? Mr. Smith?
The drop box is at least sixteen years old, probably older than that. It's beginning to rust. The problem with, there are two keys you need to unlock it. Neither of the keys works very well. I can tell you, I tried it this afternoon, just to be sure. Mr. Hodge and I went out and made the effort, and as I, as I stood there doing this, I was thinking, I wouldn't want to be a library staff member trying to do this in January. The rubber edging around the top of the box where you, where you put the books through, this rubber edging is splitting, and so it won't be long before you have raw sheet metal that's shown in that, in that place. The interior of the box has springs on it, but as you put books in, if a large book shifts to one side, it'll tip down, and additional smaller books will slide down inside the box all the way to the, under the frame of it, which is sheet metal against the ground. We have looked at a couple of possibilities that Mr. Hodge asked about, other library directors looking at used drop boxes, and apparently, there is a waiting list nationwide for used drop boxes. Appears that the People's Republic of China has not yet decided to corner the market in creating drop boxes, and so there's only a couple of companies that will do this. And so, we are requesting that a new drop box be done. But one other thing, the new box, if it is passed, will have a slot for DVDs and a slot for books. Currently, DVDs are returned to the library through a mail slot by the front door, which the fire insurance company is not happy with. And so, there's a number of issues that a new drop box would, would cover, and that's why we are requesting it at this time.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries the affirmative. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to do all those things in regard to four thousand dollars for general repairs for the library.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer four thousand dollars in free cash for the purpose of general repairs to the Berlin Public Library, said some to be expended by the Library Trustees.
Motion is made and seconded for four thousand dollars in free cash for this purpose. Finance Committee has a positive recommendation printed. Does there any further comment?
Just like to say that we have a nineteen twenty-eight building, and little, little things, things are going wrong, and for instance, the downstairs door that the children enter through is in need of replacing. Again, it's one of those situations where Mr. Klummer has looked into this, and they don't make replacement parts for the push-button locking system on the existing door, and so we're looking at a number of different issues, and we would like to have some money in a repair budget for issues as they come up.
Anyone else want to speak to this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries the affirmative. Article twenty-one. Five thousand dollars for preparation of master plan for the town vote. Ron Vavroska of the Planning Board.
I move to transfer from free cash to sum of five thousand dollars for preparation of the master plan for the town of Berlin, said some to be expended by the Planning Board.
Motion made and seconded for the sum of five thousand dollars in free cash.
Rather than do the master plan every five or ten years, for the last several years, we've been on a continuing basis doing portions of the, of the, of the master plan, and this is the five thousand dollars to continue that effort.
Finance Committee has a positive recommendation published. Is there anything you want to say further on? Does anyone else want to speak to this motion in regard to continuing the master plan work? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article twenty-two. New police cruiser. Selectmen Tom Andrew?
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate thirty-five thousand dollars from the Public Safety Fund for the purchase of a new police cruiser to replace the two thousand seven Ford Crown Victoria, said some to be expended by the Selec.
Motion made and seconded for thirty-five thousand dollars from the Public Safety Fund for this purpose. Mr. Andrew?
Mr. Moderator, if I might introduce our police chief, you in the end of our last
Mr. Moderator, if I might introduce our police chief, you in the end of our last segment, speaking by your lead, Tom Galvin.
Chief Galvin?
Tom Galvin, Chief of Police. This article is for placing a two thousand seven Crown Victoria, which has a four P M. today at a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fourteen miles. And many like me may think that's not a lot of mileage, and I agree with my personal vehicle, but it's different when it comes to police vehicles. The industry standard is that the mileage is generally three to four times that because of the idle time. That would put this at about four hundred thousand miles. I, I think that number's probably a little bit high, but I would still probably put it at the equivalent of close to two hundred thousand miles. Since I've been here since September, we've put over three thousand dollars into this car, and it's, there's more to come. It just, it makes sense at this point to, to put our officers in a new safe and reliable vehicle.
Finance Committee's comment. Mr. Harke.
If you notice that, sorry, we've recommended that the payment for this cruiser come out of a public safety fund, not free cash. The public safety fund is funded from Highland Commons, part of the agreement with the development, that they're putting money into every year. When they're fully developed, we'll put about five hundred and sixty-five thousand a year into it. Because they're not fully developed, there's about eighty-five thousand in the fund right now, and they're, they're putting more in every year.
Mr. Andrew.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. This money coming in, you know, earmarked as part of the mitigation payments from Highland Commons. In discussion about how that money should be spent, because previous mitigation funds were not spent through the budget process, the selectmen and FinCom had agreed that this would be spent through the normal budget process, and that the way that it would be introduced into the budget process is that a specific funding source would be indicated. So this is not only money for mitigation, but it's a demonstration that the town boards are bringing the spending of that money to the town meeting floor, the same way as we bring any other money that is coming into the town.
Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? Hearing no one, I will ask you to vote, this is thirty-five thousand dollars from the public safety fund for the purchase of a new police cruiser to replace the two thousand seven Ford Crown Victoria. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article twenty-three. Third, four thousand dollars for rescue squad wages. Mr. Victor.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article twenty-three. Made that motion, the Finance Committee voted four to one against it, and the department head of that, of the rescue squad feels that he can do without it for this year anyway, and as long as there's a study going on, is willing to vote off, so it does pass over.
Anyone else want to speak to the motion to pass over? All those in favor passing over Article twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes the affirmative. Article twenty-four, I move to, whoops, Article twenty-four is six thousand five hundred dollars for repairing the parking lot outside of the. Angela Yildiz of the school committee.
I move to transfer six thousand five hundred dollars from free cash for the purpose of repairing pavement in the parking lot at the Berlin Memorial School, said some to be expended by the school committee.
Motion is made and seconded for six thousand five hundred dollars for free cash for this purpose. You want to speak to it?
This is essentially to extend the life of the current parking lot.
Finance Committee has a positive printed comment, do you have anything else to say? Are there others that wish to speak? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries the affirmative. Article twenty-five. This one is fourteen thousand dollars for sound buffers in the cafeteria.
I move to transfer fourteen thousand from free, fourteen thousand dollars from free cash for the purpose of installing sound buffers in the cafeteria at the Berlin Memorial School, said some to be expended by the school committee.
Motion is made and seconded for fourteen thousand dollars for free cash for this purpose. Mrs. Yildiz.
This has been an ongoing problem since the construction of this building in nineteen ninety-nine. The acoustics in the cafeteria are very difficult, there's a lot of reverberation and echo, and what we're hoping to do is install acoustic, optimal acoustic sound ceiling panels in the ceiling, and also four-foot panels along the wall opposite the hallway inside the cafeteria to absorb the sound.
Finance Committee has a positive recommendation, do you have anything further to say? Does anyone else want to speak to this motion?
Trisha Concanon, I'm seventy-nine South Street. I'm here to speak to you, and as a parent of a child at Berlin Memorial School, and a member of LINK, which is the parent-teacher organization. I became involved in this project last year, and I'm not an expert, but this is what I've, some of what I've learned about this, this, these sound buffers. Cafeteria is used for two lunch periods every day. They last a half an hour, and each have three grades in them. At that time, the noise level in the cafeteria is very high, and I was involved in taking some of the decibel levels, and I was witness to some, how some of the children reacted during these lunch periods. During that time, it was painful to watch some of the way these children dealt with it. A lot of them had blank stares, they had their heads down. At one time, one of the children was crying outright, and many of the children leave or eat quickly so that they could leave the cafeteria as quickly as possible. When I've spoken to people about this project, I've heard a lot of different responses. Many people have told me that this has been a problem for a long time, and some people actually say to me, well, why don't they tell the children to be quiet? And with any of you who have children, young children, you know that that's not always an easy thing to do. And I know that the teachers that are in there, they do try to keep them quiet, but the children were just talking and laughing in normal tones. And I think that lunchtime should be a social time, it's the only opportunity they get to really be children during the day, and it teaches them how to function and learn social skills. So I feel this is a very important project for the school, and to help the children in Berlin Memorial School become better social people. Thank you.
Are there others that wish to speak in this motion? Molly Nozick.
Good evening, Molly Nozick, Keys Road, and also speech-language pathologist at Berlin Memorial School. Several years ago, I also researched the installation of sound panels, and I haven't been working with those since Concanon, but back then, we did some measurements, and the decibel readings came up at around ninety, and if you sustain decibel pressures of that amount for a period of thirty minutes or more daily, can cause long-term hearing loss. So I think it is something we need to consider. And also, I really have always been the person that said it's not that there are kids being loud. On the first day of school, quite frequently, we meet there for our teacher orientation day, and because we're the ones doing the talking, we don't necessarily notice how loud the room becomes, but I would say that it's probably equally as loud when adults are in that room. So I think it's something to consider. Thank you.
Are there others?
Heidi Gatar, Derby Road. This is an ongoing problem, it's been a problem since the children moved into the school. It's a problem that's not going to go away. I have two children that have since moved on from Berlin Memorial, but one that is still here. The child that is still here suffers from chronic migraines. Many times, his migraines are initiated at lunchtime because of the noise level. It's not an issue of the children being out of control and being noisy, it's an issue of the construction of cafeteria. It's not a problem that's gonna go away. I mean, fix it now, why keep beating the same such, subject over and over?
Is there anyone else? The moderator will ask you to vote, the motion is to transfer fourteen thousand dollars in free cash for the purpose of installing sound buffers in the cafeteria at the Berlin Memorial School, said some to be expended by the school committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries the affirmative. Article twenty-six. Sixteen thousand dollars for the purpose of replacing computers at the Berlin Memorial School. Ruth Blandon, the school committee.
I move to transfer sixteen thousand dollars from free cash for the purpose of replacing computers at the Berlin Memorial School, said some to be expended by the school committee.
Sixteen thousand dollars in free cash for this purpose. Ruth?
This is the part that the capa planning committee agrees to give the schools to replace, and currently we have about a hundred and thirty-seven units in the school, and the age of replacement is like about six years.
Finance Committee had a positive comment, do you have anything else to say? Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? If not, the motion is for sixteen thousand dollars in free cash for replacing computers here at the school. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimous. Article twenty-seven is thirty thousand dollars for the study of the emergency service departments. Tom Andrew.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer thirty thousand dollars in free cash to be used for the study of emergency service departments, police, fire, and rescue, said some to be expended by the selectmen.
Motion made and seconded to transfer thirty thousand dollars in free cash for this study. Tom?
Yeah, we just talked a moment ago about the fact that we will soon, very likely, be receiving in excess of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in mitigation payments for public safety. The public safety departments right now, there'll be three departments, face continuing challenge to bring services to the town, especially as employment patterns have changed, there are sometimes fewer volunteers in some of the departments available at certain times. The police, for instance, are playing an increasing role in being a, you know, a first responder. With the existing budget, with that additional funding, with some imminent retirements of department heads, it seems wise to, to get some assistance in looking at these issues, looking at issues of regionalization of perhaps some components, but to get some professional help at a forum to discuss these matters, and to really plot the, the shape of the delivery of public safety services in Berlin for the next couple of decades. So we think that with all of that money on the line to spend thirty thousand dollars in planning and mediating and identifying interests is money well spent.
Finance Committee has a positive recommendation printed, do you have a further comment? Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? The motion is for thirty thousand dollars in free cash to be used for a study of the emergency service departments, police, fire, and rescue, said some to be expended by the selectmen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries the affirmative. Article twenty-eight. Seventy-eight thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars for energy efficiency building envelope repairs. Selectmen, vote.
I move to transfer seventy-eight thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars for free cash for energy efficiency building envelope repairs in the public safety building at twenty-three London Street, said some to be expended by the selectmen.
The motion is for seven, seventy-eight thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars in free cash for this purpose. Judy?
In July of two thousand twelve, we became a green community, and we got a grant for a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and we spent that, and it's all shown to you on page twenty-eight of your town report, if you wanted to look. This year, I applied for another grant. The, the first grant we got was not a competitive grant, we got it for becoming a green community. This grant that I applied for last month is for a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, but it's competitive, and unfortunately, we won't find out until the end of June if we've gotten it. It includes this eighty-four thousand dollars, so if, seventy-eight thousand, rather, so if we get the grant, this money will not be spent. But if we don't get the grant, then we will spend the money, and I will tell you where it's on. This is for the public safety side of the municipal building. It's really kind of three pieces. The first is when you come into the entryway, it has a very tall ceiling, and it has, what do you call it, tile, something like that? It has a drop ceiling, that's it. It has a drop ceiling, and they simply put insulation on top of it, and they came in and did a temperature check. It was forty-three degrees outside, and it was sixty degrees up in the attic above there, because there's no vapor barrier, they simply put fiberglass insulation on it, and it kind of almost acts like a filter. You can see all the dirt coming up through it and everything. So one of the things they would do there is build a wooden structure and put a solid foam in it so that we have a vapor barrier that will stop the air from going up. The second part of this is the rest of the public safety building. We have ice dams, and sometimes the dispatcher even gets water dripping on her head, and part of that is because when they built it, they used plastic sheeting as the vapor barrier, and then put fiberglass insulation on it, and the plastic sheeting was held down with staples, and sometimes they taped where the pieces joined, and sometimes they didn't, and there's big holes where pipes and everything go through it, and they have heating vents that go through it that don't have any insulation on them. So the attic stays warm, and in the wintertime, when we get snow on the roof, the snow melts, it gets cold at night, it ices up, and then we get the ice dams. So that would work on that problem. And the third part of this is the windows and doors. It would, it would insulate, fix some of the leaky windows and some of the leaky doors. And I would like to point out that the old Berlin Memorial side is quite well-built compared to the new one. to the new one.
Finance committee had a positive printed recommendation. Do you have a further comment? Does anyone else who wants to speak to the motion under article twenty-eight? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-nine, accepted provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five K, property tax liability reduced in exchange for volunteer services, persons over age sixty. Is the motion under article twenty-nine? Judy?
I move to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five K, property tax liability reduced in exchange for volunteer services, persons over age sixty, senior work off program with implementation in FY sixteen.
Motion is made and seconded to accept this provision to this act. Judy, you want to speak to that?
This program is available to anybody who's age sixty or over, is a homeowner in Berlin, is a resident of Berlin. It will let you work for minimum wage, eight dollars an hour. You can, well, I should say that at this point, we do not have the outline of it decided. That's why it's not gonna start to, FY sixteen. But the state law says that you can get up to a thousand dollars in tax credit for your property taxes. The town needs to know what jobs that they have for people to do, and then people need to have the skills in order to be hired to do the work. So it's a tax write-off, eight dollars minimum wage, up to a thousand dollars. That's it.
Finance committee has a positive recommendation. Is there anything else you want to say in this? Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article thirty, a similar thing for veterans.
I move to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, and property tax liability reduced in exchange for volunteer services, veterans. It's a veteran work off program with implementation in FY sixteen.
Motion is made and seconded to accept this act. And would you speak to that, Judy?
Similar program to the senior one. You have to be a veteran, as defined by the Massachusetts State Law, a homeowner, a resident, and you have to own and occupy the property.
Finance committee again has a positive recommendation. Is there anything that you want to add? Does anyone else want to speak on this motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article thirty-one, payment in lieu of taxes in regard to a solar photovoltaic facility. Mister Andrew, you can read all of that.
Yeah, but, uh, Mister Moderator, I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a tax agreement for payments in lieu of taxes, pilot pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter fifty-nine, Section thirty-eight, H lowercase b, and Chapter one sixty-four, Section one, or any other enabling authority in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred per megawatt, and upon terms and conditions as the Board shall deem in the best interest of the town, for both real property and personal property associated with a solar photovoltaic facility having a proposed nameplate capacity of approximately three point eight megawatts and an approximately twenty-one point four acre parcel of privately owned land assessors Sheet seven, block thirty-five, block two, upon which such facility is to be located and to take all actions necessary to implement such agreements.
Motion is made and seconded. The language is the same as in the article with the addition of the number twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars per megawatt in regard to the payment in lieu of taxes. Multiply that times three point eight megawatts, and you get a handle about how much money it would be.
Eighty-one, eighty-one, eighty-one seven, eighty-one thousand seven hundred. Let's try and do that. Okay. Eighty-one thousand seven hundred. I wasn't very good at math in school. Yeah, this is, this is a typical sort of arrangement towns can enter into with respect to these facilities. The commercial value of these facilities can go up and down fairly significantly with the price of electricity and expenses and so on. So consequently, towns enter into an arrangement that instead of effectively like playing the equities in the stock market and have the taxes go up and down with that, with that commercial rate and the assessment, you're actually sort of purchasing a bond, which is you're going to get eighty-one thousand seven hundred dollars per year over the life of the arrangement. Twenty years, which will be twenty years. I'll stop there.
Finance committee, do you have a comment at this time?
There has not been a presentation of finance committee at this date, so we don't have a recommendation either way.
Does anyone else want to speak on the motion?
Alistair Valmore wrote, "Can you tell us, roughly speaking, what at current rates the amount, the amount we were getting taxes would be at this time if we weren't, if we were not to enter into the agreement?"
Mister Moderator, if I could ask the professional assessor to come up and answer that, speak to that.
Diane Peterson in the assess, in the assessors office.
Currently, the land on which the proposed solar facility will be located on is in the Chapter sixty-one A program. So the seventy-five acres, the twenty-one acres of the seventy-five acre parcel was actually contributing seventy-five dollars per year. This is a win for the town.
Someone else want to speak? The moderator will ask you to vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article thirty-one with the twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars per megawatt filled in, say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimously. Article thirty-two, this is about the tax title custodian and some parcels of tax title land to be transferred to the Conservation Commission. Selectmen pick it.
Mister Moderator, I move to transfer five parcels of tax title land as described in Article thirty-two, in the care, custody, and management of the tax title custodian, to the care, custody, and control of the Berlin Conservation Commission for conservation purposes pursuant to General Law's Chapter forty, Section eight C, and Article ninety-seven to the amendments of the Massachusetts Constitution, and to authorize the town treasurer slash tax title custodian to execute the record deeds or cert, or certified copies of votes under this article, transferring said parcels to the Conservation Commission for conservation purposes.
Motion is made and seconded. To transfer five parcels of land, tax title land as described in Article thirty-two. And in the rest of the language is basically the same until we come down to the tax title custodian to execute and record deeds or certified copies of the vote under this section, transferring said parcels to the Conservation Commission for conservation purposes. Mister Pick?
I'd like to make a couple of preliminary observations and then get into the specifics of the five parcels. First of all, some of these parcels have been, have been paid taxes on back to nineteen sixty-three, and nobody has really gone after them until our current town treasurer happens to be Dennis Fairby. He made it his business to get all this thing tightened up, go through all the work, he's been to courts, and take a tremendous amount of paperwork before you can, town can take over land that the taxes haven't been paid on. Dennis has done this, and he's done it very well. We have, in fact, about twenty-six parcels that he's managed to get through the process and the town now owns. Six of those we think should go to conservation purposes. Now, who are we? The treasurer put together an advisory committee so that it wasn't just he, it wasn't just Conservation Commission, and on that committee was, in fact, the Conservation Commission, the highway superintendent, member of the planning board, member of the Board of Appeals, and anybody else that wanted to sit in on it. And the general consensus was, after going through every one of these parcels, is that these particular six parcels should go for conservation purposes for a number of reasons, and I'll go through those. But I did want to just praise the town treasurer for getting this done finally, after years and years of it having not been done, and point out that the process was wide open and a lot of viewpoints were involved in making this decision. Now, of the five parcels, six parcels that are going to the Conservation Commission, one is simply a one and a half acre parcel, it's landlocked, but what it does, it fills in a gap and links together two existing conservation areas, so there's a pathway through it. That's kind of important to have those green wave cars. It's basically worthless back there, so we're not losing anything. It's never been paid taxes on it anyway, so it's not taking it out of the tax list. Another piece is seven point two acres in Hog Swamp. Anybody ever been in Hog Swamp? Believe me, you can't build on it. It's wildlife habitat. It's good wildlife habitat, as a matter of fact, and it abuts other conservation land that we own in there, so it increases the area for wildlife. A third parcel is a two point five acre, another parcel in Hog Swamp that then abuts those and ties it to even another piece, so it links together some existing parcels that we own in there. The next piece is a real good one. It's twenty acres, and it's out by the Forty Caves off of Lancaster Road, and it abuts Muschi Woods, which we bought from the Muschi family years ago. And it's a nice piece of land, a lot of pine on it, a lot of upland, some wetland, and a brook running through it. So it's a real nice wildlife habitat, and there's a trail running through it. There's another piece abutting it in the Muschi Woods, eight point two acres, and that abuts that, and it has the same, the same quality of land, good natural amenities to it. It's good wildlife habitat. It protects brook, and it needs to go to the town. So those are the summations of the type of land, the pieces of land that are being transferred, and giving you the reasons for it, and the fact that a lot of people had input into it. It's just been something we decided early lately. So I certainly hope that you go along with our recommendations.
Okay, this is Article fifty-two. We have a positive recommendation from the finance committee. Do you have a further comment? Finance, have a further comment? Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? Moving five parcels of land from tax title to the Conservation Commission, jurisdiction. The moderator will ask you to vote. The motion is long, and most of the language is as it was in your warrant with a couple of the changes that I noted when we first read it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries the affirmative. Yes. Now, the moderator declares a two-thirds vote on that, because these transfers require two-thirds vote for transfer of land from one department to another. Article thirty-three, another transfer of a single parcel this time on the Westley side of Lancaster Road to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes, including the purpose of conveyance by the selectmen to make some dealings as part of a land exchange agreement in the best interest of the town. Motion under Article thirty-three. Mister Pick?
Mister Moderator, I move to transfer care, custody, and control of a certain parcel of land, registry book fifty forty-six, page two sixty-eight, assessors map number nineteen, block fifty-two, block zero, located off the Westley side of Lancaster Road, referred to as the Anchor Kinney Lot from the town tax title custodian, to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes, including the purpose of conveyance, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey said property upon such terms and conditions, including without limitation, as part of a land exchange agreement, as the Board deems in the best interest of the town, and further to authorize the Board to accept for general municipal purposes such other land that the Board may acquire pursuant to said exchange agreement.
Motion is made and seconded. In the same line as the article that you have before you, as Mister Pick just read it. All of you?
This is actually a house lot that the taxes weren't paid on, so the town took possession of it a couple of years ago. It's surrounded by another house lot that has a house to the right of it, wraps around it, and comes up the other side, and then goes all the way down back to North Brook off of Lancaster Road. And both the party that owns the house and the Conservation Commission can see advantages to we trading this lot that we have to him in exchange for the access from the road all the way to the Brook, North Brook, where we currently own isolated or landlocked conservation land. It's a nice Brook, it's Trump Brook down there, and it would provide walkway in its suburb conservation land. The reason it has to go to the selectmen to do this deal is because once it goes to conservation, you heard me mention Article ninety-seven amendment to the Constitution which says, any conservation land, if it's gonna be changed in any way to another use, requires vote of the town plus two-thirds votes of both branches of the state legislature, which is very difficult to do. That's, that's sort of a guardian of conservation land. So we're asking you to turn it up directly to the selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen then can negotiate if indeed the abutter still wants to make that trade, and everybody that's seen it thinks it'd be a good deal for the town, then we can do it. That's why this is going, even though it's conservation, ultimately, it needs to go to the selectmen to make the deal.
Does that mean it'll come back to town meeting again?
No. I don't think so.
We'll see.
I actually believe it would be transferred from selectmen. Okay. Yeah, it would have to come to town meeting again.
The next time. Again, we have a positive recommendation from the finance committee. It's the ref- Again, we have a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee, is there a further comment? Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? This will put this particular lot of land in the possession of the selectmen so that they can work on a land transfer agreement. I will ask you to vote on the motion as made under Article thirty-three, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article thirty-four, local sales tax in restaurant meals. Selectmen vote.
I move to accept the provisions of General Law Chapter sixty-four L, Section Two, authorizing the town to impose local sales tax at the statutory rate of point seven-five percent on the sale of restaurant meals originating within the town effective July first, two thousand fourteen.
Motion is made and seconded, authorizing the local sales tax as stated in the article, with the effective date of July one, two thousand fourteen. Judy?
Currently, the state has a six point two five percent meals tax that you pay on everything. This would be a point seven-five percent, which would go to the town, not to the state, so it would mean that you'd have a seven percent meals tax. The treasurer, who's not here, has a very enthusiastic long letter he would like you to, but I'm going to, shortly. The towns of Worcester, Sudbury, Hudson, Marlborough, Westboro, Northboro, Shrewsbury already have this tax, so I have noted that if you go into BJ's, you will pay this tax on the roasted chicken because it's in the Hudson part of the store. Look at your tax receipt. The estimate right now for the businesses that we have in Berlin from the state is that we would be getting about twenty-six thousand dollars a year. If you look at the new growth that's coming into Highland Commons and River Bridge, and there's supposed to be a thirty-four thousand square foot restaurant at Cabellos, a conservative projection puts it at fourteen to twenty thousand dollars more, which means about forty-six thousand dollars a year. I'm not going to read you the fun facts about eating at Lowe's every day and how much you'd spend, but...
As you can read on town report, the Finance Committee was split on this, two to two. And I'm just going to sort of refer back to page eighty-four where we said that we agree that many towns have already adopted this meals tax, we agree that this will not require any additional work for restaurant or business owners, as they will collect seven percent and pass it on to the state, and the state takes care of that paperwork. And you would probably hardly notice it on any of your restaurant bills. We are not convinced it's going to bring in a huge amount of money, we don't feel a need to act now because town finances are relatively flush, and we end up feeling that certain town residents will end up paying us when we try to support our own businesses and our own town.
Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? Here are no one. The motion is to accept the provisions of General Law's Chapter six hundred forty-one, Section Two, authorizing the town to impose a local sales tax at the statutory rate of point seven-five percent on the sale of restaurant meals originating within the town effective July one, two thousand fourteen. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
Okay, we're going to have a show of hands on that, so we know what we've got. Buzz Harris, would you come up? Bob McTague, would you come up? Brad Gru, would you come up? Article thirty-five.
Would you re-announce that, please?
Want me to announce it again? For those that didn't hear, while they hear our way, fifty-five yes, forty-one no, the motion carries in the affirmative. And Article thirty-five is a similar article in regard to a six percent tax on rooms in lodging houses, et cetera. Judy?
I move to accept the provision of General Law, Chapter sixty-four G, Section three A, authorizing the town to impose a local excise tax of six percent upon the transfer of occupancy of any room or rooms in a bed and breakfast establishment, hotel, lodging house, or motel located within the town by any operator, and further to set such local excise tax effective July first, two thousand fourteen.
Motion is made and seconded to establish this tax effective July one, two thousand fourteen. Judy?
This allows us to tax hotel rooms, lodging houses, bed and breakfasts, they'll add a six percent tax onto the bill, and since I don't think we have any hotels, lodging houses, bed and breakfasts, I don't think it's going to affect anyone right now, but there will be a hotel going in down at River Bridge, and, this is from the treasurer again, calculating ninety-seven rooms with a normal range of a nightly fee in the hundred to a hundred and sixteen dollar range, occupancy should be at a minimum between sixty and sixty-five percent. Ninety-seven times sixty percent is fifty-eight rooms per night, fifty-eight rooms times a hundred dollars would be fifty-eight hundred dollars per night, times six percent, which is three hundred and forty-eight dollars, times three hundred and sixty-five days, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Now, I would, well, and I'll say that there are already hotel taxes in Hudson, Marlborough, Northboro, Foxborough, Southboro, Westboro, Shrewsbury, and Bolton even has a two percent tax on their bed and breakfast. I would like to, well, I'm not amending it, but I would like to at least say that I would like to earmark this to pay for the senior work-off program and the veterans' work-off program.
Finance Committee has a positive recommendation, do you have anything else to say? Does anyone else want to speak on the motion under Article thirty-five? If not, I'll ask you to vote on the motion. It is to accept the provision of General Law's Chapter sixty-four G, Section three A, local excise tax of six percent on the transfer of occupancy of any room or rooms in various lodging houses, effective July one, two thousand fourteen. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries in the affirmative. Article thirty-six is amending the general bylaws in regard to the regulation of business. Mr. Andrew?
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the Town of Berlin General Bylaws, Article thirteen, Regulation of Business, as described in Article thirty-six of the warrant for this meeting. And since we're moving law so briskly, I thought I might read the whole thing, but... It runs from page ninety-seven to ninety-nine in your town reports.
Motion is made and seconded to amend the Town of Berlin General Bylaws, Article thirteen, Regulation of Business, as described in Article thirty-six of the warrant for this meeting, and that would delete the current Section One in its entirety and replace it with a new Section One to read as it does in the book. And that's nice and long, and it has a lot of interesting things in it, and I hope we've read it before now, so I'm not reading it now.
Yes, this is largely to deal with the regulation of business and secondhand items to address the increasing issue of theft and presentation of stolen materials into the chain of commerce. And having said that, I will ask the moderator if he would allow Chief Calvin to speak and describe.
Chief Calvin?
Tom? Why don't you check, see if you do, you think you can start talking about this one or not. I'd just like to start, this bylaw change wasn't written to penalize any of our existing businesses here in town, and I did consult with some of them as I developed the language. We're very lucky to have, we're very lucky to have the businesses we have and the business owners that already have some business practices in place, but we need to be prepared for the future. We're experiencing an opioid addiction epidemic in this country, which has led to a rash of home, vehicle, and business break-ins in the region. Addicts are victimizing people in hopes of turning property into quick cash. The pawn, scrap, and junk industry is an easy way to do so. Berlin does not want to become a place where these criminals will come to sell their bounty. If the criminal element is attracted here to our community, they will be much more likely to victimize our residents. Having this bylaw in place will not only detract, detract less than reputable business owners from opening up here, it will allow us to track items that are pawned or sold in our community, so that we may return stolen items to people and hold those responsible for the thefts accounted for. This came up early on when I came in September, one of the officers came to me and said, you know, have you noticed the gold kiosk at the mall? It's strategically located about twenty feet into Berlin and not in Moll. Moll actually has a similar law in effect. And the case, and what was presented to me was people, and young people especially, would go up there and quickly turn jewelry into cash. And we had no way to track where this was coming from. And, you know, some of you probably in this room have had your cars broken into and maybe your homes broken into. Drug addiction now is a serious problem, it's something that we are trying to combat, and this is one of the ways for us to do that. There are some provisions that are built into this bylaw to allow the police chief to exempt certain aspects for businesses to not affect them, because that's really my goal, and I think we're very lucky that the businesses that are already here do a good job to self-regulate themselves. But as you've probably seen on TV, the glorification of the pawn shop industry, who knows with all the storefronts that are going to be opening up, who's going to want to come here? And we want to have a way to regulate them.
Do you want to speak to this amendment? You'll make the motion.
Okay, in working with the businesses in community, I worked a lot with Berlin Auto Parts, and we're trying to figure out the best way not to affect current businesses. And I did put some provisions in, but Vaughn made a great point. He said, you know, this gives you the authority, and we know what you want to do and that you don't want to affect us, but the reality is, you know, Tom alluded to it, that there's some retirements coming, and in ten to twenty years, I may not be the police chief. So, you know, who knows who the next person is and what their thoughts would be. And, you know, I don't want to put something into a place that, yeah, okay, we're able to do it now and not have a negative impact on the current businesses, but what does the future hold? And who could hold my position in twenty years? And that person could come in and negatively impact our businesses that are already here.
Mr. Andrew?
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the proposed amendment to the bylaw as set out in Article thirty-six, by adding the following as a Section eleven. Eleven, this bylaw shall not apply to secondhand dealers, junk dealers, old metal dealers who have been in continuous operation in the Town of Berlin since two thousand, and who are otherwise in good standing as a holder of a junk dealer's license, as a dealer-in or keeper of a shop for the purchase, sale, or barter in junk, old metals, and secondhand articles.
Motion is made and seconded to amend the amendment that is proposed here, as set out in Article thirty-six, by adding the following as Section eleven. This bylaw shall not apply to secondhand dealers, junk dealers, old metal dealers who have been in continuous operation in the Town of Berlin since two thousand, and who are otherwise in good standing as a holder of a junk dealer's license, as a dealer-in or keeper of a shop for the purpose sale or bartering junk, old metals, and secondhand articles. Okay, I have that made and seconded. This is an amendment to the article as written in the, as written in the warrant, so we would, I will entertain it this time, discussion related to this amendment only. So if you have something to say for or against this amendment, now's the time to do so. This amendment would exist the current dealers who've been in business for a while. I hear nothing being said, so I'll ask you to vote on the amendment. The amendment adds the paragraph which exempts the people that have been in this business in Berlin since the two thousand. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries in the affirmative. So we now have the, we go back to the main motion, which is to replace the present Article thirteen, Section one, with the new section as it is in that printed in Article thirty-six of the warrant, with the addition of Section eleven, paragraph eleven, which we just approved in the, in that amendment vote. Is there anything further to be said on the entire proposed bylaw? Yes? Mary McCalk?
Mary McCalk, one nineteen Hurst Street. My question is, what happens if my husband and I want to open an antique shop, which we were planning to do as part of our retirement plan in our home that we've lived in for thirty-something years? Are we going to be subject to all the paperwork? Because it's pretty onus.
It is, and I agree that there is, there is a lot to...
Judy?
Sorry. I agree that there is a lot to it. Most of it is something that can be accomplished with a digital camera, and that's kind of the way I set it forth, is with a, with a computer and a digital camera, you can, you can handle most of it, but this is, you know, going forward that all the businesses would be...
So nobody in town can open up an antique shop without having to go through that?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there anything else concerning the motion? Peter?
Peter Hoffman, Randall Road. So I've got two questions, one for the chief, and I'll ask the second question first. So under Article, paragraph ten, it talks about a hearing, before whom is that hearing? And then I'll get back to the first question. Who's the hearing officer of word?
Mr. Andrew?
It would be before the Board of Selectmen, it's the licensing authority.
Thanks for that. So, in connection with the gal that was up here a moment ago, and just everyone, what's the practical implications on an amateur level where the enforcement will take place? Make us understand what a new business organ, a younger than two thousand business must go through from amateur standpoint, because I, while I can read this, I don't really get it, I get lobbying is part of it, but there must be a practical example you give all of us to make us understand it better.
I think the best example I can give is investigative, how we use this to return people's property to them. We've had, you know, several people who have been victimized in town recently, we've been able to return some jewelry because of Worcester's laws that cover this. And basically, a customer would come into your store, your business, and, you know, you would document what they brought in, you would photograph it, you would... you would document what they brought in, you would photograph it, you would photograph their identification, you would photograph them. And then that would be sent to the police department. We would, you know, we would maintain that. You would also maintain that as a purpose for your business. And it's protection for both of us, because if we were to come in at any point and look at something and say, "Hey, we know that's stolen," you know, we would end up taking it from you. You lose, you end up could possibly lose out. We wanna have a system of checks and balances in place that we can find who's responsible for it, to make you hold again as well, as well as the initial victim of theft. I mean, most people that go in and do this, they're good people. You know, and we're, I guess it's a way of keeping honest people honest, but we really have to deal with what's in front of us in the epidemic of addiction and the thefts that that's leading to. We need a way to combat that.
Mister Moderator, just one more?
All right. So, connecting back to the last speaker, who I don't know. She's a small business anticipating operating a very sleepy business in a sleepy town. It seems to me, I don't do this, that some kind of exemption or discretionary exemption in connection with the police chief or the police department or the selectmen should be in place so that she or other small businesses that would contemplate germinating here can do that, and it gives us the sleepy community that I think some of us think Berlin has.
And if you look into some of the paragraphs there, there are some exemptions that are built in, because there's a built-in holding here, and there are some exemptions that are built into that to not unduly impact people, and that would be taken on the case-by-case basis. Thanks.
Paul McKelp.
Paul McKelp, Carter Street. For the last thirteen, fourteen years, I feel that this country has been living in a culture of fear. And I just wanna make sure that what is being proposed is based on hard facts and substantial circumstances of what this is trying to address, and not trying to put something forward in anticipation of issues.
And I, like I said, the businesses that we have in town, we have not had problems with. And believe me, that's, that's a good thing. Some of it, you're absolutely correct, is anticipation and being prepared for what could come. And we don't always wanna be in reactionary mode. We wanna have ways to combat things before they occur. We wanna discourage someone who would be less than reputable from coming here. And I understand that it's hard for you wanting to start a small business on your own, but I think if you look at the provisions that are there, there are some things that can be worked out to not unduly affect you. And we have this forum. If we go a year out and there's a problem, we can amend it, and we can amend it to benefit our residents.
Do you, do you have any much knowledge about this kind of a bylaw in effect elsewhere and how it's worked?
I come from the town of Wayland. You know, we had this bylaw in effect, and we had some precious metal dealers come into town, some jewelry shops that did a lot of secondhand transactions, similar to pawn shops. And it's worked very well, and it, you know, seemed to work seamlessly as we implemented it. There are, I wouldn't say a majority of communities in the Commonwealth, but lots of communities in the Commonwealth and lots of the communities around us. You know, Hudson, for example, we've recovered some of our residents' property just recently from the pawn shops in Hudson, because they have the rules in effect.
Anyone else wanna speak on the motion? Okay, the motion? What front over here?
Lynn Ryan, Central Street. If someone has a consignment shop, how would this law affect them?
If you read it, it talks a lot in purchasing and customers you purchase from. If you're a consignment, you're not actually purchasing from people. You're more facilitating, facilitating the exchange and being paid a fee for that. So, I think if you look at where it's purchased and sale and the documentation affects you as a business owner, purchasing things from people walking into your store, as a consignment store, you wouldn't be purchasing things.
Is there any others? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
The ayes have it. Article capacity affirmative. Between now and the time the Attorney General approves the bylaw, it is not in effect. In other words, something could be an existing business before the bylaw is in effect. Article thirty-seven, see if the town will amend this zoning bylaw with a definition for riding stable. Yes?
Laura Mullery, Highland Street. I move to amend the Berlin zoning bylaw by adding the following definition to Article fourteen, riding stable. The commercial housing of three or more horses by means of rental of stalls and/or stables, and/or the use of property for the purposes of horseback riding lessons, horse training, and similar uses. It shall include any stable where horses are kept for hire to the general public and shall include, but not be limited to, guided and unguided riding or carriage driving.
Motion is made and seconded to amend the zoning bylaw as you saw in Article thirty-seven.
The Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April eighth, two thousand fourteen, to consider comments concerning Article thirty-seven on the Town of Berlin annual town meeting warrant to be held on May fifth, two thousand fourteen. At the planning board meeting held on Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand fourteen, the planning board voted for in favor, zero opposed to Article thirty-seven.
That's the report of the planning board that's required. Yeah, we keep that. Do you wanna speak to the entire motion and the intent of it?
Oh, needed an article. Riding stables are addressed in the zoning bylaws, but there was no article to define what was considered a stable. So, through research of surrounding towns and areas, we kinda merged a lot of different definitions together to come up with what you see before you.
Anyone else wanna speak on this motion? Here is no one. I will ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article thirty-eight, see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Berlin zoning bylaw section four-ten, floodplain district, with a couple of changes. Should we agree with the planning board?
What time is it?
I can't see the clock on here. That doesn't mean you have to talk long.
Tim Wheeler, two forty, Weller Street. I'm on the planning board. I move to amend the Town of Berlin zoning bylaw, section four-ten, floodplain district, by making the following changes. In section four-twelve, delete the letter E from each panel number and replace it with the letter F, and change the dates to July sixteen, two thousand and fourteen. And in section four-thirteen, delete the words one-twenty G, flood-resistant construction and construction in coastal domes.
Okay. Can we add one-twenty G into the product we're gonna take out there?
Yes, sir. The Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April eighth, two thousand fourteen, to consider comments concerning Article thirty-eight on the Town of Berlin annual town meeting warrant to be held on May fifth, two thousand and thirteen. And at the planning board meeting held on Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand and fourteen, the planning board voted for in favor, zero opposed to Article thirty-eight. The reason we read those reports is required to report to you on what the planning board's action was in order for us to take action at the town meeting. In February, we got a letter from Colleen Bailey, the flood hazard mapping coordinator for the state of Massachusetts, telling us that FEMA, you're all familiar with FEMA, who generates flood maps like these, had modified them. And what they had done is, in changing them, the letter F needed to be substituted for the letter E. So, you recognize exactly what unit of map we were under at that point in time. So, this takes effect on July sixteenth. And then the other portion has to do with removing some language that no longer is pertinent, given the changes that they've made to flood hazard issues. So, it's really basic housekeeping. Thank you.
Our zoning bylaw refers to those federal documents, right?
Yes, sir.
And that's why we have to change this, because they've gone and changed those. Anyone else wanna speak to this motion? I don't think I see anybody, so I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? You wanna call it a unanimous vote? Which I particularly wanted to declare, because it has to be at least a two-thirds, but stay long. Article thirty-nine, see if the town will transfer available funds, some of money to be used toward the reduction of the tax rate. Mister Rogalinski of the finance committee.
Mister Moderator, I move to pass over Article thirty-nine.
We have a motion to pass over the article.
As we said earlier, we've paid for all growth, we've paid for all of our expectations on future growth.
Anybody else wanna comment on any of that? Mister Andrew?
Isn't that a nice break this year?
The motion is to pass over Article thirty-nine. Anybody else wanna comment on it? Not all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries by unanimous vote. And then we have Article forty.
Mister Moderator. I move to adjourn this meeting to Monday, May twelfth, two thousand fourteen, at twelve noon, at the Berlin Town Offices lower level, twenty-three Linden Street, at which time and place, the polls will be opened for the election of town offices under Article forty, and that the following announcement of the results of the election, this meeting be dissolved.
Motion is to adjourn the meeting to Monday, May twelfth, two thousand fourteen, at twelve noon, and then we have the, at which time it starts again at the town offices for the election under Article forty. And that all of the announcements of the results of the election, this meeting be dissolved. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? And before you leave, I hope you'll help us, Mister...